This is the Granberry City Council meeting. It's our regular meeting. It is 6:00 PM Tuesday, April 16th, 2024. We're at Granberry City Hall at 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas, 76048. And I will look into the audience here and say tonight we are back live. So our feeds that you've been getting on YouTube, you can now just pick up and hit the grandberry.org, punch in where it says, "In the meeting." Is it in the meeting? And you're going to be right here with us. So thanks for all of you out there. I'm sure there's three or 400 people, or four, maybe. I don't see Diane Raspberry. Is Reverend Raspberry not here tonight? I'm going to ask our city manager, Mr. Chris Kaufman, to lead us in the invocation. And if you'll just stay standing, we will go to the pledges.
Thank you. Let's pray together. Father God, we just thank you for bringing us together tonight with spirit of unity and serving our community. Just thank you for the opportunity to live in a great nation that we live in. Just watch over, protect our country, watch over, protect our servicemen around the world that are working behind the scenes to keep us safe. And we just thank you for that. We pray for the peace in Jerusalem, and we just ask that you would give us wisdom as we leave our city tonight. Bless this town together. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. If you'll join me in the pledges, please. My pledges are-
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the great state of Texas?
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all. I believe we have a proclamation. Kaufman, do you have something with this?
Okay. Perfect.
I get to read the proclamation and this is just for the work. Okay. Lance, everyone knows Lance? Everyone knows Lance? Okay, good. This is one of those guys in one of those docks that I was comparing it earlier to a dock. There's, you know, floating around, not doing a lot. You just want to see what's going on underneath. What's going on underneath suddenly erupts and everybody's flying water, feathers, everything is everywhere. We're looking forward to that. This is official proclamation. Whereas economic developers cultivate thriving neighborhoods, champion sustainability and resiliency, boost economic prosperity, enhance the quality of life, and build robust tax bases. And whereas economic development professionals' mission is to proactively recruit economic development opportunities and new businesses, work with these existing businesses to assist with business retention and expansion, support development of public infrastructure, and serve as an information clearinghouse. And whereas economic development professionals complete connections between community stakeholders to collaborate in promoting job creation, community investment, infrastructure investments, and an optimistic future. Now, therefore, I challenge Mayor of the city of Granberry to hereby proclaim the week of May 6 through May 10, 2024, as Economic Development Week and recognize the important contributions made by economic development professionals in attracting and retaining high-quality jobs and improving the quality of life in our community. Lance? Thank you so much. I think you did this by yourself.
No, no, it's team effort. Yeah, team effort all the way.
I think you have a downed team effort out there. Thank you. Appreciate it. Kaufman, thank you.
Okay, do you want to take another picture?
Let's take a few. Actually, I want to take one also.
Yep. Five, three.
Thank you, sir. Council, city manager, to issue encouraging statements to recognize city staff. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. First thing I'd like to do is express my appreciation for our IT staff. What a dedicated group of individuals we have that are providing exceptional effort to the city. And we experienced the cyber event, as y'all all well know, and they worked tirelessly to restore our systems, putting in countless hours of work. Additionally, they provided various support projects such as the city hall renovation, access control implementation, and your hard work is, we want to commend you for it towards our organization. On the night of the initial incident, Stephen Sweeney put in more than 20 hours of work. After a few hours of sleep, he returned and continued his efforts. Chris Collins, the director of IT and security, has been a blessing to our city. His depth of knowledge in cybersecurity and IT architecture further exceeds his peers in our municipal industry. The fact that he is still one of our police officers is a double bonus for our city. He offers great leadership skills to his team and our organization and spent more time than you can imagine through this event that we had in 2023. You know, we spent literally hundreds of thousands of dollars upgrading the IT system to where it would be more robust moving forward. Basically, he took a five-year plan, and he and his team implemented the five-year capital improvement plan last year. We still got some more things to do, but he implemented that to get us where we are today, and his team worked tirelessly to get that done. In the midst of the renovation of the city hall and all the infrastructure that had to be expanded for that project that we haven't even talked about, new wiring, cabling, cameras, the security system, they put all that together for us. As the director, he's carefully reviewed all the city hardware and software to gain the maximum efficiency and cost savings that are possible as he onboarded with the city and as the new director and completed the cyber event while implementing the systems that we had prior to planning the distractions of the cyber event. Additionally, he, Chris, worked closely with our insurance provider to gain all the benefits possible for our cyber expense insurance. In 2023, Stephen Sweeney obtained two certificates. One is a Spillman Administrator. I don't know if y'all know what that is, but that is the software that the police department uses. And another one is the P-25 radio system administrator. As you know, during all this last year and a half, we've implemented the P-25 radio system, and we had to have people trained to run those computers that run that radio system. And Chris was one of the first ones to go to get that training. He's also been actively pursuing his network certification, which plans to complete this year. Ian Patrick, our GIS analyst, continued to handle the day-to-day of the GIS requests while learning how to reimage and deploy user systems outside of his normal duties to ensure the timely restoration of user services during incident recovery. What that means is all of our computers that were able to be reused had to be reimagined, and so he did that in his office while the other guys were out doing the other work in the network. So he was able to do that for us. Finally, Travis Watkins, our newest addition to our IT team, took on the Uniflow printer deployment and just recently achieved certification in the P-25 radio system administrator. So that's a big change for us, too. Now we have two people here with the IT team that are certified to be able to work on the IT, I mean, on the P-25 radio system that is basically Granberry Radio Network, which serves hundreds, hundreds, and hundreds of first responders at this point, and will continue to grow. I just wanted to publicly recognize these gentlemen for their hard work and what they've been putting the time in and the effort. Most cases happens behind the scenes, and without their dedication and willingness to go the extra mile. The city's recovery from the cyber event would have been greatly diminished, and our IT systems would not be as great as they are today. Mr. Collins just came back from a conference and was shocked at the level of network security that's lacking in our industry, and local governments are vulnerable beyond what we can imagine or talk about. And we're very blessed to have this team working with us and providing the services behind the scenes all the time. So thank you, guys. Appreciate it. I would also like to ask Chuck to play the video that he and Jeff put together.
Saturday morning, April 13th, 2024, 180 volunteers decided to-
Keep Granberry Beautiful!
We had a lot of new people, and a lot of people returned back for the great Granberry cleanup, so I was very pleased with that. A lot of trash out in the community, and after today, it'll be a lot cleaner.
Keep Granberry Beautiful!
From near Granberry High School and from all across the city, more than a ton of trash was collected.
It's amazing. I mean, any time you can bring a group of people together to do something good for the community, it's always a blessing.
I really feel like people in Granberry really care about where we live.
Students, families, sports teams, church groups, and local service organizations-
We love our community!
-all working in their community to pick up more than a ton of trash.
I would just say thank you again for coming out on a, particularly on a Saturday morning, spending part of your time to invest back in the community.
Also Saturday, shredded instead, 423 cars with old tax returns and bank statements put into the shred truck by members of the Granberry Volunteer Fire Department, and you donated almost $2,200.
Thank you.
Cleaning up and shredding. Thanks again for making it a great day to keep Granberry beautiful. For the city of Granberry, I'm Chuck LaCotta.
Thank you, Chuck.
So I wanted to recognize Stephen Vail, Jeff Newfer, and Chuck Littico for their leadership in this program and their efforts on Saturday, especially to lead us adults through that process. GIST superintendent Jeremy Glenn and Michael Ross worked with the high school students, and they had about 40 students, I believe, were involved in that collection, maybe 60, I'm not sure. But they picked up a bunch of trash that we didn't weigh, weren't able to weigh because they had a different container to put it in than what was weighed. But so all in, we probably picked up over 2,500 to 3,000 pounds of litter, and that's pretty amazing. I know at one time I picked up a flattened-out armadillo hide. I thought maybe I should make a pair of boots out of it, but I didn't. But anyway, something else going on behind the scenes is our billing inspection department and the code enforcement. They literally do hundreds of inspections every week, and this political season, we've had a challenge. We've had some political signs that look like a caution sign that's prohibited by our state law and also by the city code. We've had to work with those folks to reinvent some of those signs. And then also, we had a carnival roll into town on Thursday and set up shop without a specific use permit. Caused a lot of, lot of stress, internal stress, trying to figure out how to be gentle and enforce the law. All in all, I counted today how many different work teams were involved, and there were at least 10 different groups of work teams in the city, you know, starting, I'll just read it to you, starting with the permitting department, the code enforcement department, the inspections team, the community development team, the tourism team, the police, the municipal court, the legal department, the city manager and the city council, all were involved on those people coming to town and setting up a carnival without going through the right process. Very disheartening to see somebody do that, but it's very stressful to think that you're going to have to stop somebody from doing something that they wanted to do, probably as a fundraiser for their organization. So, you know, we did do our code enforcement, staff did their job. It's up to the court system now to do their job, but it's unfortunate that you ask somebody not to continue to violate the law, and they continue to do it anyway. And so it's very disheartening to have to write three tickets instead of one. And I guess it was a business decision. They think it's cheaper to pay the ticket than to lose the money not being in business. So it's a very, very tough week for those folks. I want to give them a special appreciation for, you know, holding. It's not, it's not a subjective job we have. We, I mean, it's not an objective job. We have rules that we have to enforce. Our city code specifically tells me as a city manager to ensure that all ordinances are followed. And so when somebody violates the law, they've removed the due process that the neighbors had in that process to, for the council to be able to award a permit for that temporary use. And so they completely circumvented it, and that's very unfortunate that we have to go through that. But they, on their behalf, I'm sure the owners of that property that were cited don't remember the last time they went through the process, a couple of years ago, and neighbors were complaining about the carnival. And so probably different leadership. I'm not sure what happened to those folks, but I think in the future that they will probably comply with us. So anyway, it's been a tough week, just tough, tough two weeks since we last met, just taking care of the political signs and the carnival that shows up without a specific use permit. So anyway, thank you all for your dedication and moving forward to take care of that stuff.
Others? Any counsel something to say?
There.
Mr. Vail.
Chuck, guys, great job on the video. I didn't know Dragnet, or is that Dragnet? Okay, Dragnet was in town.
Jack Webb?
Jack Webb was here yesterday. So that was excellent. Chris, I just wanted to say thank you to you, you know, providing the leadership from the city. You know, we had a conversation around this, about this event that I wanted to do, coming back from a TML conference, and, you know, you made it come to life. And so the staff, all the parts department who had to, you know, went out after the event to pick up all those trash bags, and there were a bunch of them, and really just all the volunteers that helped put the thing together to get it all organized. Jeff and Chuck did a, you know, a great job with the communication and really getting it all organized. And like you said, when we had a shred event, that was also the day that we had boat trash pickup day in the city. So it was like the trifecta of cleaning up our community. I think, I think Chris said we probably had over 175 people, a lot of GSID students out there and parents. We had a soccer club out there with a whole bunch of kids that were at Hewlett Park. And, you know, just the trash pickup was terrific. My team went out and cleaned up the ramp there, 377 and 144, a little dangerous in that area. Bruce and I found a pair of brake pads, which made me a little nervous. I did find a dollar. I thought that was kind of a lucky strike extra. And, you know, the 377 onto Pearl Street going into town, which is just a highly, you know, traffic area for visitors coming into our community, and that's one that always bothered me. That one needs to look fresh and clean, you know, every day of the year. So, Chris, thank you for all your leadership. Thanks for all the volunteers, and it's great to see the community come together. Thank you.
I too want to say thank you, and I want you to know that this does not go unnoticed by visitors to the community. Sunday morning, I'm at Paradise, and this couple comes in, and we started talking. I'm generally bashful about that, but we started talking and found out that they're from Plano. They're just visiting. They've come in, and they had a certificate that they could go to Paradise from one of the local establishments, one of the SDRs, and they were, they were, they were here. And then he says, you know, this may be the cleanest city that I've been in in years. I took that as, thank you, Steve. Thank you, all of you that were on the video and all of you that were not. And then I'm walking over here tonight, and there's a gentleman came out, and he had what I thought was tads on his shirt. I said, tads? Where is that? Well, it was T.A.O.S., so I misread it, but it generated a conversation. And come to find out, he is just traveling. He travels. He lives in Washington State, and he chooses to travel, and he did his research, and he picked Granberry, and he said, this is a beautiful, beautiful community. I get to take credit for that. I know who does the work. Thank all of you for doing the work and making sure that this place is the kind of community that people come to and say those kinds of things. They're saying it about you, and I appreciate it. It's very much appreciated.
Just one more fact about that cleanup. From the, from the bridge of 377 to the bamboo on, or bamboo on 377 to the bridge at the lake, pass the water treatment, literally had a pickup load of trash bags of trash that was collected, just in that section alone. So it was, it was very much needed. We tried to do this in October and it got rained out, but we're hoping to form an organization called Keep Granberry Beautiful. It's a, it'll be a nonprofit facilitated by the state footprint, basically. And so if you're interested, you're hearing this message on TV, you're interested in being a part of Keep Granberry Beautiful, please reach out to us. We're forming a corporation. We need a board of directors, and we need volunteers, and we need people that are interested in seeing us continue this program. So thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody? All right. Thank you very much. Move on to public comments on agenda items. Ms. Walker, do we have anyone sign up? We've had no one sign up, so we will move to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or previously discussed items and be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Any items anyone would want to pull off, talk about later? Okay?
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez.
I just have a comment. I don't want to pull anything off. I just want to make a comment on 6.3 about the Granberry Regional Radio Network. I think it's, it goes to the success of the leadership of Granberry that, you know, we took on this project not knowing what, what the outcome would be, but I think it's exceeded what we thought would, what it would do. And I think Mitch can, can vouch for that and say that it's really grown beyond our expectation, and it's reaching a lot of other entities that are out there and providing additional safety within this community and also in this county and beyond. I just want to say thank you very much for, for the city and for the council to approve this project, and it's just going to continue to reap its benefits for, for everybody in this community.
Thank you. Anyone else? No. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Mr. Obrador makes a motion.
Second.
Mr. Vail, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I believe that passes 6-0. Let's move to the deliberation agenda. We will consider approving a chapter 380 sales and use tax grant agreement between the city of Granberry and Bloomfield Homes LP. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. This is a great opportunity to do something similar to what we've done on a couple of other economic development projects, but this one specifically is for housing subdivisions. So I'll turn it over to Lance and let him take it away.
Thank you, the city manager, the mayor, and council.
Thank you, Jeff. Is it on?
Yes.
Okay. We have a, an incentives application from Bloomfield Homes. They've submitted a chapter 380 agreement for construction materials for a period of 10 years. This agreement would allow for construction, construction materials to be sourced from the city using a Texas direct pay permit. And basically, the sales tax from those construction materials would be cut in half. The city would receive 50% of 1% of the general, the general tax rate, and Bloomfield Homes would receive 50% of the 1% general sales tax rate also. The financial impact of this is, I think it's about $180,000 to the city. And what this Texas direct pay permit does, like if, if Bloomfield Homes were purchasing construction materials without this permit, and let's say they were purchasing construction materials from Weatherford or another city, the city would not receive those sales tax proceeds. So this allows the city to receive sales tax proceeds that it might not ordinarily receive, you know, through a, through a typical purchase of construction materials. Bloomfield Homes is, is looking to construct about 110 homes in Eldorado and Abe's Landing as well. So I also have Tim Stewart from Bloomfield Homes here. He'd like to make some brief comments to you. But the suggested action is to approve and authorize the city manager to execute the chapter 380 sales and use tax rebate agreement for Bloomfield Homes. Ms. Stewart, would you like to make a few comments?
Hi, my name is Tim Stewart with Bloomfield Homes. We're excited to be here. Bloomfield Homes has started building homes in the DFW market in 2004. We've built over 15,000 homes collectively since then. The last three years, we've built 2,000 homes. Our geographic footprint is just Dallas-Fort Worth, which seems to keep growing as now it would be Granberry, all the way to Commerce, to Anna, to El Verado. So we've got quite a footprint. We're up in, and we're excited about it because we love the growth that Dallas-Fort Worth has. We love dealing with the communities which, in which we're located. We always like to say we're kind of building on the outskirts of town in neighborhoods and communities that, that want people and love growth, and I think our product really fits what the needs are. We're looking at, across DFW, the average price of over 500,000. Our first sale is just underneath that in Abe's Landing. I've got a brochure if anybody would like to look at it, but yeah, we build our classic product, and what we like about it is we build it all over town. So if you drive to Anna, you'll see that house. You drive to, you know, we were in Ulyss at one point in time, you'd see it. You go to, anywhere across town, you see Bloomfield Homes. We build the same product, the same specifications. We do have one other product line that we do offer, but we're not offering that in this neighborhood in this point in time. But we like what we do. We like focusing on DFW, and we're excited to be in Granberry.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming by.
Welcome to Granberry.
Yeah. Council, questions or comments? There was one, I think the other day you talked about, there is a limit. I mean, this is not, this program is not open to just everyone. There's a set dollar limit?
There's a dollar limit of $800,000 per year.
Per, so-
So you have to be above that limit.
Minimum.
You have to spend above $800,000 in construction materials.
Okay.
That's correct.
Great. Yeah, very good. Mr. Rodriguez, and I spoke about it earlier. Mr. Rodriguez, and I spoke about it earlier. Did you get any further clarification, any questions? Okay, good, good. Okay. Do I hear a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate a chapter 380 sales and use tax grant agreement between the city of Granberry and Bloomfield Homes LP? Mr. Vail makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Wadley, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I believe that's approved, 6-0. Thank you, sir, and welcome to Granberry. Okay. We can now move to executive session. I now declare that the Granberry City Council convened into open session that all members are present. The city council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas government code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section 551071, consultation with attorney pending our contemplated litigation. And section 551072, deliberation regarding real property. Section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We are now in executive session. Thank you. I now declare that the Granberry City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session. All council members are present. Is there any other business? Mayor. Mr. Vail.
I move to authorize the city manager entered to, enter into a development agreement with Bill Britt Phillips for the use of an onsite switch facility pending the expiration of the current moratorium and to accept a petition for voluntary annul- the current moratorium, and to accept a petition for voluntary annexation.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Oberdehr. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Is there other business?
Mayor.
Mr. Vale.
Move to authorize the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Gaylor and Janet Douglas for the use of an onsite switch facility and to accept an application for voluntary annexation.
Second.
I hear a motion, and I hear a second from Mr. Wadley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. There are noneays? Passes six and oh. Is there other business?
Mayor.
Mr. Vale.
Move to authorize the city manager to complete the purchase contract and close on the property located at 200 Kings Plaza.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Wadley seconds. Discussion, no? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. That will pass six and oh. Any other business? No other business? Good. There being no other business, I announce that this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.